...candidates who have expressed an interest to step up and fill a two-year vacancy on the city council. First of all, thank you all for your willingness to serve. We all appreciate that, and it's always good to get new perspectives, and new perspectives are always welcome. For the record, the appointment will be made on January 26th at our next meeting. I also want to remind everybody that any citizen can still petition for a special election. It would take 188 signatures and must be turned in to City Hall 14 days after the appointment is made. As for tonight's format, I have asked each councilman to submit questions that they would like you to answer. We will stick to descriptive questions so that everybody has the opportunity to answer the same question. And to make it fair, I will rotate the order in which you answer the questions. And that order is going to be determined by how you turned in your applications. So Ken, you were the first one to turn in. You'll be first, followed by Josh, Bobby, Ursula, Jillian, and Scott. That's how we'll do it. Any questions? All right, let's roll. To begin with, Ken, please state your name, tell us a little bit about yourself, and how long you've been a resident of Eldridge.
My name's Ken Kirker. I've been a resident out here for 13 years, my wife and I. We built a house out here. I grew up Rock Island, 50s, 50s, 60s. Rock Island, we moved, we got married, we both went to Augustana before we met each other, my wife. We got married, moved to Moline, raised a couple of kids, and Moline through the whole school system there. In our 50s, my wife wanted out of the two-story house for health, some health reasons, knees, new knees. So we looked all over, you know, we looked over to buy a house, then just had to look at everything, I mean, all around Quincy. We both worked in Davenport at the time. We just decided to build at some point, then where did we build? Again, looked all over. Interviewed some builders, met Terry Knudsen, looked at some of his houses, and found a lot out here, and he got in a lot for us, off the golf course, and built a house out here because we needed, I knew some people out here already. But we just thought this would be a good place to live, right outside Davenport. I kind of wanted to be away from the city a little bit, had enough here, but we're close enough to get to work. So we built a nice house out here, our retirement house. And that's what it is, we're retired now, as of a year ago.
Awesome, great. Josh?
Yes?
Same question. Live a little about yourself, and how long you lived at Eldridge?
I am 26 years old. I've lived here my entire life. I plan to live here for the remainder of my life. I work at the Scott County Library System. I've been there just over nine years. Love my job. I even worked here at the community center for a few months, and then the library called me and offered me a job there, and there ever since.
Okay. Bobby?
Hi, Bobby. I'm 43. Moved to Eldridge about six years ago now. Married to my wife for 20 years, been together for 25. We have a 14-year-old at North Scott High School. One of the reasons we moved to Eldridge was we were looking for a good school district, and North Scott was top of our list. We both born and raised in Illinois and lived over there, and, you know, we just, we wanted our kid to go to a better quality school, so Eldridge was, you know, somewhere, the North Scott District was where we started looking. Eldridge was where we ended up because we knew some people that lived in town here. They had nothing but great things to say about the community, and, you know, we found a house we really loved, and that's where we ended up, so we're happy to be out here.
Awesome. Ursula?
Ursula Scherif here, been a resident of Eldridge for a whole nine months now. New to the community, but I'm married, we've got a two-year-old at home, new to the community, but always had plans to move out here, just due to the sense of community that's out here. So to answer your question, that's all we got. Anything else you want to know, Scott?
No, we're good.
I'm Jillian Kaufman. We've been in Eldridge going on 13 years. My husband and I, we both grew up in different, just small rural communities on the Illinois side, and when we were looking for a home, that was important to us, just like small community feel. We have four children. My oldest is deaf, and so just accessibility and just awareness, and I work in mental health, all those things are priorities to me also.
Okay. Thank you. Scott?
My name is Scott LaPlante. I moved to Eldridge 10 years ago. My wife and I, we've kind of moved around Iowa a little bit. She's a pastor, so she's, we've lived in Indianola, lived in Newton. My journey begins in Wisconsin, Nebraska and Wisconsin never came together, but my wife's from Nebraska, so we both lived in very, very large cities, growing up in Omaha, and I lived near Milwaukee, and, you know, when we came to Eldridge, I mean, that first hometown holiday just rang us home, this is our home, this is a place we love. We have one daughter who's graduated from North Scott High School with a junior. Currently, she's enjoying not having her sister around, but I enjoy, I enjoy the view of a city left in five stoplights.
One more coming soon. Thank you. Number two, why did you not run for election in November, and what made you decide to do so now? And Josh, you're up.
I was actually looking to run for council back in September. I went up to the city to even ask for application instructions, but the deadline had already closed, so I said, well, I guess I'll be back in two years, and then your seat happened to open up.
Bobby?
Well, something I was considering, and my wife ended up running for school board, and I decided that probably best to have one thing to focus on for our family at that time, and, you know, it was, it was super important for her to, you know, have that opportunity, and, you know, my plan was to run again, or to run in '27, you know, without having her on that same path. So that's the reason that I'm here today.
Awesome. Ursula?
The reason to run now was because there's so much time in a given day, right, and commitments, and prior commitments have moved on, and now, and I was raising a two-year-old as well, didn't know what life would be like, but as commitments change, now was a better time.
Jillian?
I've always had a passion for, for serving, and I was actually considering the parks board opening, and then just through more research and just conversations with people, I was inspired to apply.
Okay. Scott?
I currently sit on the park board and planning zoning, very busy. Really, my, I literally was writing this, you know, last Sunday, and was a member of the community candidate. We were talking about something on the parks, and this person says, why don't you run for the seat? And, you know, back in the fall, I was just so focused on, you know, the two boards that I was on, and I love, I love working on those, but after talking to this gentleman and a couple of my friends, they know this is kind of what I've been looking at my entire life. My grandfather taught me about, you know, stepping up in your community and providing your time and talents for something like this, and, you know, I thought about it, you know, it was, it's me, I think it's the right time, and I had that conversation with my daughters and my wife, and they told me, yeah, this is, this is what your grandfather would want you to do.
Ken?
I've always worked so hard in my life, I just felt like I never had the time, and I'm finishing up a term at a committee I've had a personal in St. Paul in my church. Let's come to the end, I've been retired now, trying to figure that whole rollout, and my wife just retired in November, so I hadn't really thought about that, and I didn't want to run against Jeff. I'd like to thank all of you for not running against me.
All right. Sometimes we are forced to make unpopular decisions that are in the best interest of the city. How would you separate your personal beliefs when making those tough decisions? And Bobby, you're up first.
Well, obviously, you know, the biggest thing with, with budgeting and having, you know, the revenue to spend, obviously, you don't want to spend more than you bring in. That's, that's the number one rule, you know, and you definitely have to look at things from a bigger picture than just thinking that, you know, if, if everybody wants to do one thing, it doesn't matter if it's right or not. You have to put those things aside and look at what's best for the community, what's best for the people who are paying their taxes in this community, who are putting their faith in, in the people in this room to do what's best for them and their families.
Okay. Ursula?
I think for me, it's pretty, pretty simple, and kind of what Bobby mentioned, was what's best for the community and what's best for the citizens, right? But I don't want to call it black and white, but for me, it's very much what's best for the community and citizens.
Okay. Jillian?
Yeah, I think our personal beliefs and values definitely, like, have some, some level of impact or kind of guide us, but I think serving on a board, you recognize the values, the mission, and I think that's kind of a guiding point, along with a good strategic plan, and so I think sticking with, with the goals and having those things, you know, front and center, I think can kind of, can allow, would allow me to separate my personal beliefs enough to, to, to serve in this role, and respectful and appropriate.
Thank you. Scott?
Making the hard choices, that's very hard. I've seen this board do it. I mean, I've been on planning and zoning and parks, you know, I come to these meetings, the guy's sitting in the back, but, you know, I've seen you just, you go through the process of making that decision. You know, there's always the interest of everything is, you know, the people of Eldridge, you know, and you have to make sure you're prioritizing, you're understanding balance, you don't get too heavy in one area versus another. So I'm, I'm, I look at the air, at the idea, you know, the best interest of those people who are asking us, asking who they're representing to, to make the best wise and, you know, cost-effective, cost-effective wisest decision. We are the stewards of, you know, the funds they provide us to, to run the city and to make sure that this, this place not only is a great place, but continues to be a great place.
Ken?
I think my whole career, I've had, I've been in positions where I've been in leadership in the know, kind of, in the business, part of the business. So I've, I've always been doing budgets, payrolls, personnel. You tend to find out things way ahead of everybody else, and you're part of that decision process, whether it's going to affect somebody's employment, or a change in business structure, or a strategic plan. But I've learned over the years in the for-profit world, and then getting into the nonprofit world, and also, things I've done in a church setting, whole different world. But I, especially the church setting, that was harder to keep things away from, you know, personal beliefs and stuff, but I had to grow because of that. But I can keep things confidential, I can, you know, make the hard decisions when I have to, and I've done that over my life. And sometimes it's painful, and, and sometimes, even though it's painful, you do some follow-up, and you find out it's for the best, in most cases, so.
Thank you. Josh?
In regards to hard decisions, I'm going to bring up the topic of even closing the community center recently, as that's what we were interviewed about with the North Scott Press. I know that was a hard decision, if I was asked to the North Scott Press, obviously, people are concerned about that. I can understand, it was like a $70,000 loss we had last year. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, I don't want to be wasting my taxes. And when I worked here about roughly 10 years ago, I know my employees would openly steal, comp parties when it wasn't needed, so there's ways to go about managing it better and potentially turn a profit, seeing it succeed, but pulling the plug and looking at the situation, yeah, I can understand, yes, you have to put this forward, because I don't want my taxes going to just a losing business.
Okay, thank you. From four, what do you think will be the hardest decision you'll have to make? Ursula?
I think, obviously, as, as mentioned already, in a way, the community center board obviously is up for a vote tonight, and then as well as the incorporation of fire department, right? That's another topic that will be, will be at stake, to say the least.
Jillian?
The hardest decision I'll have to make, probably one that a part of me would feel like my personal beliefs and values, maybe kind of brush up against, or maybe go against on some level. So, yeah, I would think that, I think that might be the hardest, or one that isn't very favorable with some people. I know criticism doesn't, doesn't feel right to me personally, but I think there's ways to, to navigate that in respectful or thoughtful ways. Yeah, that's it.
Scott?
Yeah, I look at the, you know, the character of our town. I love it. I mean, instantly, I fell in love with it, so if we're, as we see growth, I mean, the city is making sure that we keep that, that character of our town as it's been, that's one. And you want to have growth, you want to have, you know, expansion, but, you know, how much do we, if we start losing that identity of our, our town, that's tough. And, and I think the other side would be, it wouldn't be enough tough issue, the decision would be a budgetary issue, where we got to tell an employee that they're no longer going to be employed. I mean, that has ramifications, not only just for that person, but people in their family, and just, that, and I've seen that, I've seen budget cuts. I was a part of a budget cut, where, you know, I had to get realigned in the job, and it stings, and it's completely out of your control, and, but again, it's one of those things where you want to be transparent as possible of why it's happening, and preparing, and preparing that person for that change.
Ken?
I think Scott touched on that, the hard part is the people. You, you, you know, I can do the financials, I can do the decisions, but how it affects the people, whether it's the personnel that work for the city, or other people that live here, they're just as important to me, but, you know, you work those things out of your mind, and you try to be as empathetic as you can, you know, when it comes to decisions, but sometimes decisions have to be made, and you figure it out, it's the people.
Josh?
I think they're reading my mind, but I'm going to come to the same conclusion. I'd hope that it doesn't come across the table if I were to get elected, but, yeah, letting someone go, I mean, in a position like this, or even the community center closing, people are going to lose their jobs, and I hate to see it, but at the end of the day, if it's costing taxpayers money, you got to do it. I mean, you can do it with empathy, but it, it has to go.
Bobby?
Yeah, I mean, no matter what you do, you're never going to please everybody as a whole. When you do have to make those hard decisions, again, if it does involve downsizing, you know, people being let go, laid off, whatever the case is, you know, it, it definitely has to be considered for what's best for the community, what's best for how this city operates, and if it's not something that, you know, makes sense for how the path forward to growing this city the right way, then, you know, those would be difficult ones to, to go through.
Thank you. In your opinion, how does the city rank on services provided versus taxes paid? And Jillian, you're up.
It seems like the, how the city ranks in services provided and taxes being paid, I think that the council of the city tries to make thoughtful choices based on the information they have, input from citizens. I know from the minutes I've been reading, Nevada, or just other, other people who are going to different towns, neighboring towns, and just really getting information on how other towns and districts, like places are doing it well, so I just think, I think being intentional and thoughtful, I feel like is how we, I think we rank pretty well. I, I, from what I've seen, while there's always room to improve, right, I do think that it ranks up there because of the thoughtfulness and the intention with which we're, how people in decision-making positions are choosing to spend taxpayer money.
Scott?
I live on Leclerc, and I can see every day that, I mean, Leclerc is done well during the winter time, you know, plowed well. I see the services every day driving past my house. I can see the services when I look down other parts of the town, of how clean our town is, how we're looking to provide safety. The flashing stoplights are just one thing I'm like, that's a great idea in certain parts of the town. I think we do a great job in comparing ourselves to neighboring communities to ensure that we are in a competitive place for the taxes needed versus the service provided. I worked at Public Works in a summer job, you know, long, long ago, and I understand, you know, the cost it goes into maintaining streets, keeping things maintained, and, you know, and it's, it's, I enjoy how clean this town is, how homey it is by, we're on top of things all the time, and we have people on this council already. That reassures us that we want, we want to stay on budget, we want to stay solvent to what we can, we're not in a fiscal crisis, we're, we're in fiscal comfort.
Ken?
Well, I came from Illinois, so maybe that answers something. But, you know, I mean, I grew up, you know, lived over there most of my life, last 13 years I've been out here, but, you know, I was afraid to move to Iowa, my wife's from Iowa, but we did it, and we're, you know, thankful we did, and, and we really like it out here, just like Scott, you know, the cleanliness of the town, the school system, just the services the city supplies. You know, just, just go into the yard and draw them off your waist, the guys at the truck, how friendly they are, just, it's the friendliness out here that we like, and, you know, we want to participate where we can, so.
Okay. Josh?
I think the city offers a lot compared to its budget, I believe it's like 17.1 million, around there. So we have Eldridge Days, we have food truck rallies, we have summer concerts in the park, we had a helicopter come to one of those. We have clean streets, they're always plowed, they get patched very quickly, we have great library service here, we have good water pressure, never have to worry about that, we have money to paint the water tower if it's looking bad. We provide a lot for this city, and I'm, I'm glad to see it's being spent the way it is, and for the image of the town, I think it's very well spent, it's seen as a high-end town.
Bobby?
Well, same as Ken, coming from Illinois, I mean, you know, the, the taxing over there is considerably higher, and I feel like what you get over there for what you're taxed is, is, there's a very wide gap there. Here, I mean, I think that, you know, we have a great police department, I see, you know, the officers patrolling on a regular basis. When it snows, you know, the, the streets are, are cleared within a reasonable amount of time, you know, same thing with the yard waste pickup. You know, having that available, you know, in the spring and the fall for the, the residents is fantastic, because, you know, if, if you don't have a way to get it to the refuse drop-off, then it's, it's nice to have that offered to the people that live in Eldridge.
Ursula?
I think we rank very well compared to the, the communities around us. I think from all the services that people mentioned here, I moved from Davenport into Eldridge nine months ago, and I think there's, to me, there's a wide difference between how they rank versus us compared to the services that we have here.
All right. A little easier question here. Have you ever served any role where you were a steward of taxpayers' money, and if so, what capacity? And Scott, you're up.
Well, of course, I sit on the planning and zoning, and I, I sit on the parks, we, I enjoy both. We're trying to do as best we can to, when we get a budget, use a budget. When Jeff left parks, he's, you know, he left parks in a way of telling us to really, you know, look at it, you know, big, but also remember to ensure that we are using those funds appropriately, and, you know, with, you know, looking at big projects. I've also worked with, not here in Eldridge, but I mean, in prior places that I've worked, I've worked, helped with making budgets, or preparing budgets for people that I knew in public service life, elected officials, so I looked at the dollars and cents and looked at all, the means that goes into a budget. Being a part of education, I know what an education budget looks like. Budgeting is, that's a process. I mean, not a lot of us enjoy that process, but it is one of that, the process in which you have to really fine-tune everything, you just can't think, you have to be sure down to every bit of fund that's provided for you, looking out for other resources, grants, all different avenues in which budgeting is important.
Ken?
I've never been in charge of any city funds, as far as a steward, but similar, maybe a little similar, is, you know, I've been in charge of several church funds over the years. I think the last six years of my career in empowering buildings, I felt like a steward of dollars there. And that wasn't our money, that was participant money, that was for nonprofit versus the for-profit world, where we're just out churning and making money. And it was, it was more value there to make sure you really took care of that money and grew it as much as you could, so.
Okay. Josh?
I haven't had the decision power over at the library, but I do see a lot, like, what they spend money on, because it is all taxpayers, not city, but county, but I see, like, we have an online digital program called Libby, they have hundreds, if not thousands of Kindle books, audiobooks, so that's something we spend a lot of money on that not a lot of people see. We obviously buy new catalogs, have to get rid of stuff that is circulating, promotions for, like, big events we have, or children's programs, storytime and all that, so I see how money moves around like that, but I like the decision power there.
Bobby?
Well, I've never been in a role to, you know, manage money that's been, you know, spent by taxpayers, but I do recognize the importance of being a good steward for that money, and making sure that it's being spent responsibly, and not, you know, being wasted on, on frivolous things. So, you know, just being cognizant of, of knowing that they're trusting you to do what's right with the money that they are spending on their taxes to the city.
Ursula?
Obviously, I serve on the community center board today. Previously, I've served on the Davenport Parks and Rec Advisory Board there, and then not, I would say, city government, but also in higher education, I serve on some Augustana College Boards that, that would be stewards of, or would be responsible for the fund of the college.
Okay. Thank you. Jillian?
Yeah, I've served on nonprofit boards, I currently serve on a state board, and so just to be a good steward, I really believe in ongoing training, education, just so I'm doing the best I can in the role that I'm in, along with, you know, being a good steward of taxpayers' money, is also knowing how to get other revenue funds, like, such as grants and things like that, and so being intentional and just knowing how to do that, some of that stuff in my role on nonprofit boards. It's been important.
Okay, thank you. Next question. How do you plan to engage residents who normally don't participate in local government, especially when it comes to difficult and unpopular decisions? And Ken, you're up.
Well, that'll be new to me, because I've always worked behind the scenes in my career, so it depends what comes up, I guess, and, you know, going to events, you know, I guess, it was funny, you know, I had to go a few places Friday, and people recognized me from my picture in the paper, and my first thought is, oh, brother. Here we go. It was kind of, it was kind of hot, but it was fun. I was at a couple things at church, they, people were, wish me luck tonight, just, you know, you got a lot to give, you know, that's what I want to do, I give, but, so it's, I guess when we're out there, events, you know, it's the, the moonlight chase or something, you know, it's good to know people, so.
Josh?
I would say, like, maybe, like, small advertising, like a sign, like, hey, there's a city council meeting tonight, if someone's driving by, I got time, swing by, or if they see out in public, they're, they have a pressing issue, like, hey, I heard this was brought by a previous meeting, did you vote this, did you vote that? You can say, I can take your name down, I have decisions already been made, you can come back to another meeting and ask the council yourself, or come in whenever you're free, or if you see out there for a meeting tonight.
Bobby?
Well, I mean, kind of did a little bit of community engagement with my wife's election campaign, so, you know, talking to neighbors and, and, you know, asking if we could get their support for, you know, her in November, and, you know, just, just talking to people, asking them questions about what they thought about the school district and things like that, you know, just to get their side of what they feel as a resident here, and, you know, just having that. just having that, that good sense of community, especially with my neighborhood. I mean, you know, we all know each other. We all talk to each other. I mean, it's, it's a good sounding board from some of them on things that they are either unhappy with or things that they really love about the community, so.
Okay. Ursula?
I think it's two things for me. It's, as some of these guys have mentioned up here, is talking to people. That's super important. But the more important thing to me is being approachable, right? If there is something that, you know, being approachable will lead people to come talk to you about things as well as be more involved in city council or city, you know, terms.
Jillian?
Yeah, all those are great ideas. And just, yeah, the community relationships. And I think just making sure we access everyone, you know, even doing those things might not reach everyone who you want to engage with. I think obviously social media is a great way, but not everyone's on social media. I know Eldridge used to do like a newsletter. The website I know has been updated or was recently updated. And so just continuing to do those things and really being aware of just like the different populations that live within our community and how to really engage them and, yeah, wherever they are, where they are.
Okay. Thank you. Scott?
A friend of mine was the mayor of my hometown, and one day we just, we had the very same thing. How do we get out there and communicate with people? And I threw out an idea, and he was just, well, we just walk the downtown businesses, go on every business and talk to all the business owners, managers, the owners. Also, we started talking to more and more people. And it was a very long day. It took us multiple days to do it. And with the size of our business district, I see that being a viable thing, going door to door to the businesses, reaching out to them, reaching out to our civic groups. We got great civic groups in this community, Rotary Lions. Get, reach out to them. I know two of you have had to speak to the council, a little meeting where you had, you answered the public's question, I believe you and Mayor Campbell. But so it's reaching out, finding different places, being out there at events, you know, saying, I am, I am approachable to great, you have to be approachable. There is no question, you know, I say, no, I'm not. I'm willing to answer questions because it's important. You know, years long before smartphones, you get to write things down there. I mean, I was always encouraging my friends who were in public office to have a little notebook, a little pen, you're talking to somebody, you take down a name, and they're concerned. Because if they see that and you act on it quickly, you know, that's going to build a lot of connections to those people in your public that trust you. And while I carry a little notebook and a pen, it works. And I want to build those connections. And I've done some extensive internships with businesses, back in, a business organization in my hometown that, well, looks at that, building those connections between cities, civic, and government agencies and personnel and people.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Number eight. How will you work with city staff, the mayor, and fellow council members to ensure effective governance? Josh, you're up.
I believe communication is key. So just being open, throw your thoughts out there. What do you think about this? What do you think about that? Just speak your mind. If someone's bound to have an idea, you could have an idea just in general, bring it forth and see what everyone thinks of it.
Bobby?
You know, collaboration, that's big with even what I do. When we have our managers' meetings, you know, sitting down with everybody and having, you know, candid conversations about what works, what doesn't. You know, same thing. You know, somebody may have a good idea that's working for their territory that might work well for the others. So just putting it on the table, having ideas, bringing them to everybody, and seeing what works, what doesn't.
Okay. Thank you. Ursula?
For me, it's communication. That's super key in all of it. But also, as Bobby mentioned, collaboration, being open to other people's thoughts and collaborating together will in equal, you know, come to the best solution.
Jillian?
Yeah, our greatest success collectively will be just collaboration, communication. And then I just have just a lot of curiosity. So just, yeah, with that curiosity, just, yeah, building the communication and collaboration.
Okay. Scott?
In the two years that I started up on park board and a year and a half since I've been on planning zoning, I've gotten to meet a few of the faces around the table, actually. I know everybody except for Tracy. But, you know, getting to know people, understanding, coming that predetermined. You know, one of the things I always look at is, you know, you have a wealth of information. Everybody has a wealth of information. They got experience that I don't have. I've only been here for 10 years. Some of you have been here for two decades or longer. I mean, I mean, you sat on park board for 17 years. Some of you have a wealth of information. So you've got to have that ability to talk with people, not at people. I mean, I've been teaching for 26 years and, you know, and it's just, you have a change of leadership, a change of coworkers, and you learn how to find those common grounds for a common goal.
Ken?
Look forward to meeting everybody in the city and around, just building personal relationships with people, asking questions, and asking questions to me, bouncing ideas back and forth to use their knowledge and to use my knowledge, what I've been through in life, and maybe come up with answers or solutions on whatever the issues might be. But looking forward to meeting people and building relationships.
Thank you. Looking back over the past year, or at least the last several months, in your opinion, what do you feel are some of the most important or significant issues we've discussed or decisions that we've made? And Bobby, you're up first.
Well, I mean, you know, doing some of the infrastructure improvements around town, I think those are important because it does show that you're using the taxpayers' money in the right way by providing those things with the improvements. You know, the roads, First Street, while it may have been inconvenient for a little bit, it's so much better now than it ever was. You know, some of the things you've done with the parks around town, I mean, having the new soccer fields out on Buttermilk. I mean, that's, you know, that's very big because it gives the residents a place to take their kids and be involved in some of those soccer clubs in an environment that is nice and feels safe, especially with the new fencing around it. Yeah, definitely the infrastructure improvements that have been done in and around town have been very great.
Okay. Ursula?
Could I have you repeat the question just one more time?
Looking back over the past year, or at least the last several months, in your opinion, what do you feel are some of the most important or significant issues that we have discussed as a council or decisions that we've made?
Absolutely. Okay. I just want to make sure. For me, you know, I've had a short-term living here and being involved. I think similar to some of the things that Bobby mentioned, the infrastructure improvements that have happened, obviously down First Avenue, the soccer fields out, you know, by Buttermilk, and as well as, you know, some of the improvements that have been made around town have been, have been very much better for the community.
Jillian?
The two things that come to mind are investment within the police force, just the ongoing trainings and equipment, things like that, along with the fire station conversations and just those ongoing conversations, but also how you guys have been trying to like gather information from other communities and just what's worked for them. When you transition from volunteer to a, you know, I think that's going to be pivotal just for Eldridge as we continue to grow, having a really, yeah, good police force, just, yeah, safety and security and stuff like that.
Okay. Scott?
Well, I guess my bias is going to jump out here is the parks. I mean, Sharon Meadows is second to none. I mean, I just, great space. Hickory Creek's going to be incredibly awesome once we get it really, really rolling in the year to come. But I look at how we're, we have balance here in decision making. You know, when we look at the roads, we're looking at trying to make sure that every public service that public taxpayers pay for is going in one direction rather than being putting our eggs in one spot. And when people see that, they can see throughout our community, not just in one spot, they feel that the more complete, more well-advantaged city. And, yeah, there's probably challenges ahead. I mean, there's going to be, there's going to be some things where it's going to try and draw your attention to the more like the, you know, the firefighters issue and potential development along Highway 61. I mean, that's always a possibility, but we always have this balanced approach. And that's really important to have as a government. I've seen city governments really get off one way, and that's, and something gets left behind, something gets ignored. And that's not a positive thing for a government to do.
Okay. Ken?
I think the past six or 12 months, what I've heard the most about is the fire department. Maybe what got me is we had a house down the street from us a year ago burned the ground. I mean, and a modern house. The house was three or four years old, which just shocks me that that can happen. But it can. Never found out what caused it, that kind of stuff. But that just seems like a big complicated issue. As the city grows, where do we hire full-time staff? You know, what we've got isn't great, but at some point, I think you need some full-time staff there as we grow. I want to keep growing. The other thing is this facility. That's what I've heard the most noise about, especially lately. But now that decision's been made, how do you close it down? And what do you do with the building? What happens to this thing?
Josh?
I think the new stoplight going in, that was a recent decision. There were talks about it, roundabout before. I think, well, yes, that would have been cheaper. I think it's quicker and more logistical just to put in a stoplight because you wouldn't want to route traffic around. That spares the citizens. So that's a smart decision there. Again, closing this place, I mean, yeah, it was bleeding money. You had to cut the cord. The investment in the police training, I was at a meeting a month or two ago to where we got a better training program for the police officers. I think that was a great investment. So I think that's it.
All right. What would you like to accomplish while serving on the council? Ursula, you're up.
For me, it may be too simple, but I think it goes back to one of the answers I had before, you know, what's best for the community and what's best for the citizens, continue to see this place grow, but also, you know, to find balance of why people move here as well.
Jillian?
Just a city just defined by planned appropriate growth, where there's mutual respect between citizens, government.
Okay. Scott?
I want to say a lot of things like that growth, but I want to keep that hometown vision and hometown feel. The moment we lose that, I think we lose a big chunk of Eldridge. It's just, we draw, drawn people here. We need to grow. We understand the growth is there. But find those core ideas to keep, you know, that Eldridge feel of a town, of a community, its hometown, its people, not just a place.
Okay. Thank you. Ken?
I like that, too. I like, you know, I keep going back to growth, but we always need growth to maintain your budgets and things. But I'd like to see a little bit more retail as far as eating establishment that's out here. A few more options. But I love what's happened with the park boards, you know, the bike paths that's happened. I'd like access to my neighborhood, but we don't have that yet. I got a lockout on Lincoln, but, and there's no, you know, ditch. But just maintain the city, the cleanliness, the friendliness of the city.
Josh?
I would like to see a little bit more lights on the bike path. I've noticed, I've gone out past a couple nights and noticed that there's no lights along the bike path. I mean, it doesn't need to be one every like 20 feet, but every now and then it just feels a little bit safer at night because I see a lot of people out there running, jogging, riding their bike, or simply making the town feel more alive. But probably 20 years ago, I remember like Eldridge Day, it used to be so lively. If people would just go there for the parade, come back later in the evening for Moonlight Days, they'd stay there all day. And I think bringing that kind of life and energy back to the city would be a huge boost.
Okay. Bobby?
Well, key, Eldridge is the, you know, preferred city for people who are looking to move to this area. You know, there's a lot of options if you're looking on the Iowa side of the river. But again, the things Eldridge has, the, you know, the small-town atmosphere, but there's still things to do out here. There's still opportunities for, you know, kids to play town ball, to be in the soccer clubs, things like that. But just continue kind of building the path that Eldridge is on without getting too far from where we are.
Okay. Last question. Easier one. Do you have any questions for us? Josh?
What is the hardest question any of you have had to do or hardest task you have tackled?
Great question.
The hardest decision you'll ever have to make is the one you don't believe is the correct one, but it benefits 80% of the taxpayers. I like that.
I think everybody here would probably agree to that after what we've talked about recently. And I mean, there's just tough decisions to make. Any other questions for us?
What inspires you to serve?
Personally, when I retired from the newspaper, never thought I would do this, but I'd covered the council for many years. And then there were just some things going on with the council that I didn't really like. I didn't think the direction was good, not that well. I might as well see if I have a voice. And that's why I ran for council. Anybody else want to answer that question?
I think I ran because I really thought I didn't have a choice. I kept saying I'd do it when it was right. It was like something I wanted to do, but then I got really digging deep. And there is no right time. The right time is now. So I just made a decision and jumped in.
What was the question, Jillian?
What inspires you to serve?
Listen, I'm the rookie here, so I'm just, I'm just getting on the wagon, right? I thought I'd do something like this when I was a young man. But as a younger person, you know, the kids and the career and all sorts of other things that take my energy and time, it just, as Ryan said, it was never the right time. When this time came around and like some of you had some folks approach me and say, you should consider doing this, my first response was, nah, I'm too old. I'm going to retire. Nah, I'm good. But the more I thought about it, the more I thought, this is someplace that I've lived for 37-plus years, that I truly care about, and I've got a lot to offer. And if I can help from a strategic planning standpoint, from a visioning standpoint, from a capital improvement plan standpoint, step up or step out. And so that's what finally, and honestly, my kids inspired me. Both, all three of my kids said, Dad, you should do this.
I've been in city government for the past 18 years. I believe that city government is the best opportunity to serve, serve your community. So I can't really think of a better way. I'm personally on boards and church boards or the community activities. But just to be here to support my community, to be a voice for those who either chose not to run or feel that they don't have a voice, to be able to bring their ideas and share them, and try to be a catalyst, you know, for them. It's perfect. And I love serving my community in that capacity.
All right. Oh, Brian, sorry.
Well, I am the Rip Van Winkle of the council.
So you've got both ends of the spectrum here.
First got on in the early 90s. Spent a stint down in St. Louis managing our company down there. I originally got on because I'm not one to complain without putting the time and effort in to make it better. I mean, we get calls all the time. People complain. They don't know all the facts. I mean, so I got on to make the town a better place. Population was about 2,500 people when I got on. I'm a big one for controlled growth, you know, so we can build the infrastructure prior to the growth coming. Otherwise, it complicates things so bad. I'm also a big advocate of being a steward of the money. There's a couple ways of doing a budget. One way is figure out what you need. We have core functions. And then taking that amount, assess it against your level, your assessable valuation, come up with dollars. The other way is, how much money can we get? And let's figure out how to spend it. I am not for that. Any of you told me over the years, I pinch pennies. But I want this town to maintain the hometown feel. I want to make sure growth is being done the right way, all the way from not just one section. We went out with that in the 90s. We realized that we want the town to grow in all directions. So you don't have an old part of town, new part of town, da, da, da. We did sewer plants. Been doing all that. Just got to stay ahead, but I... Just got to stay ahead, but I, don't complain if you're not involved. So I thank all you for submitting your names. It's a thankless job, kind of like the Rodney Dangerfield, you won't get any respect. But it's, it's very rewarding to know that you had a positive impact on our community, your friends, your neighbors, the family, your family. So it's well worth it.
Very much so. Anything else?
I was just going to ask what you all think is Eldridge's greatest characteristic attributes? What makes Eldridge the, the place that you want to be?
The people. I mean, we have a great community here. You can see it when you walk the streets. Anybody you talk to, that's our strength. The school district is huge. You know, that ties us all together. I don't think you can get that everywhere. Brian?
In addition to Scott's, too, because I agree 100% with those, is our location. We're in the center of the county. We have two major interstates, whether 61 and 80. We're set up for growth, controlled growth again. But it's the people, school district, and location.
I would say, doodle to them, especially a shout-out to our police department with the work that they do, and they're investing their time, being physical, responsible with new technology to protect us and serve us. Along with that, big shout-out to Plummy Works and what they do, you know, you mentioned, some you mentioned having the streets plowed, too. Yard rates picked up, trash picked up as well, you know. Those things are key, keeping the city clean, keeping it functional. When that doesn't happen, when the toilet doesn't flush, when your water doesn't turn on, your power, then it's starting to get issues. And I think that we have done a substantial job to looking at that and our infrastructure and that growth, not only now, but for the future, so we can keep the lights on, we can keep the water flowing, we can draw in businesses and residents to invest in our community.
Anything else? Like Brian said, want to thank you all. I mean, great answers, this has been great dialogue. The decision was difficult. I wish you would have ran in November. I hope you run again in two years if you don't get chosen. We need people to step up and that want to be active in the community. So like I said at the beginning, our plan is to make a decision in our next meeting on January 26th. Our plan is to bring forward a recommendation to the council, and then the council will make that decision to approve.
I also kind of want to piggyback on what he said, and Brian, you know, like I said earlier, there's, there's no right time. I applaud you all for coming and putting in your name for this. Obviously, we can only pick one, but I would highly encourage you all to look at the next election. We're, what, 18 months away? And I know the last election, we had two people run unopposed, not that we didn't want them, we're happy with what we got, but it's always nice to give the community more choices, you know? And so, again, I just, I thank you guys, but I encourage you guys all to consider two years from now.
Right. And also the option to have a special election as, as well. So with that, I mean, this is, this is a big decision with items and so forth. You guys have, you know, a lot of vast information that you can come and support and come right in with that. But, you know, it's a, it's not a temporary position, it's a, it's a two-year position, too. And you have to keep that, keep that in mind as well. I thank you guys for willing to throw your hat in with that, too. So it's a decision that, that, that we have to, that we possibly have to make. But I definitely don't want to have the opportunity to, to not have the community involved, too, in that, in that decision-making, you know, with that, kind of like what, what occurred with the community center, too.
All right, thanks, everybody. With that, I would ask you, Brian?
Scott, I mean, I know that you said earlier, we're going to make a decision coming up at the end of the month. In the event we can't make a clear decision, is it still possible? It could just, we could just say, it's going to an election?
There's a process for special election that the petition would need to be brought forward with the appropriate number of signatures to call for that special election.
No, that's if we choose somebody, somebody can petition to make it to election. I'm just saying, if we can't come to consensus on who is the best fit, you know, would we just say to the, to the public, we're going to have a special election on this date, you guys vote?
Well, the council already passed a resolution indicating their intent was to appoint, and so you would have to, as a council, make a different decision. And so, at this point...
Because we have four people voting, you know, if we can't get to a clear consensus on a individual, or if we come down two to two, or, you know, we have, each one has a different person.
Yeah. Those are all scenarios we've talked about. You don't have a clear path.
Yeah, I think, I think though, we've got six strong candidates who made our job difficult, but not impossible. To, unless, unless somebody comes forward with the petition for special, for special elect, for a special election, I certainly wouldn't suggest that we move in that route, that we figure out somehow as a council to get together, come to consensus, and pick one of these very fine candidates. Because we've, we've got people who are volunteering right now, who have great experience, and if we don't have to go through that, and if we don't have to go through the cost of that, we should be able to come to consensus. We can do that.
I'm just saying, in the event we can't, because...
We can.
Because you're correct, because of the people that have put their name in, it made it harder for us.
Right, we can do that, we can do that.
At 60 days, that, that would expire, that appointment process, and then it would automatically go to special election after the 60 days passes if there was no appointment made by the council legally.
I don't like to think like that.
Yeah, I don't think we want to leave that seat open that long.
No, I don't think so either.
But if we can't come to consensus, we could make a motion just to send it to a special.
I have faith in you guys. I think you guys can do this.
I'm just laying out all the facts and possibilities.
As you do so well, Brian, thank you. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Motion is second. I'll never say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. And thank you guys.
Appreciate you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.